Good evening and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. The regular meeting of the City Planning Commission will be called to order and we will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Conditional use permit and minor amendment requests will have final action here this evening unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days. Any decision made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the third council meeting of the month. Any decision made on major amendment, rezoning requests, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of the month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. Any final action taken here tonight on a final development plan is final. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the Commission's consent agenda, planning staff and the Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the city's 2015 land use plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed. First, request of planning staff to present a brief report on each item. Second, the petitioner will be requested to come forward to make a statement or answer After the petitioner, anyone from the audience who wishes to address a particular agenda item shall be recognized. Then the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission other than staff move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you please either turn off or silence your cellphones and pagers. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
I'll start by reading the consent agenda items. Item number one is approval of the June 6, 2007 minutes of the regular meeting. Item two is Platts. Item three is ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, a major amendment petition number 2007-0611 to Chapter 15, dot 45, dot 070, Plan Development District at 320 feet east of North Shawnee Avenue and the south side of East Third Avenue, East Third Street, allowing changes in land use as reflected in the revised subarea regulations. Item four, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, a major amendment petition number 2007-06-13 to Chapter 15, dot 45, dot 070, Deal and Business and Technology Center Plan Development District at North Career Avenue, West Cayman Street, allowing changes in land use as reflected in the revised subarea map, amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Item five, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, a major amendment petition number 2007-06168 to Chapter 15, point 45, point 070, Granite Belly Plan Development District at Seabird Avenue, allowing changes in land use as reflected in the revised subarea regulations and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Item six is an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property northeast of 85th and Western Avenue from AG Agriculture District to the Heather Ridge 2 Plan Development District, petition number 2007-06-18, and amending the official city zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Item seven, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property at South Ebenezer Avenue, West Graceland Court from the RS 2 Residential District to the RA 1 Residential District, petition number 2007-06-20, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Item eight, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property at 301 South Lake Avenue from the RA 1 Residential District to the C 2 General Commercial District, petition number 2007-06-21, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Item nine, conditional use permit at 1100 South Cliff Avenue in the C 2 General Commercial District to allow motor vehicle display and sales. Item 10, conditional use permit, 2001 East 10th Street and South Lewis Avenue in the C 2 General Commercial District to allow telecommunications tower. Item 11, conditional use permit at 1811 North Lowell in the I 2 General Industrial and RC Recreation Conservation District to allow a commercial recreation facility. Item 12, conditional use permit at 1015 East Chambers Street in the I 1 Light Industrial District to allow a solid waste transfer station in conjunction with a hazardous waste facility. Item 13, conditional use permit at 1201 South Lions Avenue in the C 2 General Commercial District to allow a hotel motel. Item 14, a minor amendment at 2520 South Louise Avenue to Subarea E Meadows-on-the-River Plan Development District, allowing an on-sale alcohol as accessory use for a restaurant. Item 15, final development plan at West 69th Street and South Western Avenue in Subareas C Rolling Heights PD Plan Development District to construct, construct a bank. Item 16, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the revised ordinances of the city standards for outdoor lighting. And item 17, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the revised ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 15, point 03 definitions and Chapter 15, point 55 parking, loading, and stacking regulations. Those are the items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to move any one of those items to the regular agenda?
Mr. Chair, my name is Shawna Goldammer and I represent planning staff this evening. We have requests to move items seven and eight from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. We do have neighboring property owners that wish to speak on both items.
Okay, so item seven, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property at South Ebenezer Avenue and West Graceland Court from the RS 2 Residential District to the RA 1 Residential District, petition number 2007-06-20, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. That'll be moved to the regular agenda. We'll hear that first. And item number eight, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property, 301 South Lake Avenue from RA 1 Residential District to the C 2 General Commercial District, petition number 2007-06-21, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. That's number eight, we'll move that as well. Is there anyone else who would like to move any items through the regular agenda? All right, is there anyone on the Planning Commission who would like to move any items? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the revised consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the consent agenda, moving item number seven and number eight to the regular agenda.
I'll second.
Is the motion a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. The revised consent agenda is approved. On the regular agenda, besides the addition of item seven and eight, on item 20, there's a change in the, in the agenda. As it reads on the agenda is, "An ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property at 1410 West 17th Street and 829 and 831 South Lake Avenue from the RS 2 Residential District to the Sanford USD Medical Center Plan Development District, petition number 2007-06-03, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls." And the change is, instead of the Sanford USD Medical Center Plan Development District, it should say O Office District, as said. So please, please make that change. So with the two additions and the change in item 20, is there a motion to accept the revised regular agenda?
A motion to accept the revised agenda?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. The revised regular agenda is approved. Our first item will be item number seven. An ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property at South Ebenezer Avenue, West Graceland Court from the RS 2 Residential District to the RA 1 Residential District, petition number 2007-06-20, amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicants and owners in this particular case are Tom Wiseman. The RA 1 District is intended to provide areas for moderate residential density between 10 and 17 dwelling units per acre. The applicant is proposing to develop medium or moderate density residential. The site is irregularly shaped and is surrounded with single-family homes. The applicant has been asked to be working with the City Engineering Department regarding vacation of the current and future right-of-way of Ebenezer and a bridge over Skunk Creek. The applicant has provided information as to the location, but not the nature of the proposal. The proposal is approximately eight acres in size and the land does have development capacity of 139 units. Staff can support the increased density if no objections are expressed by existing neighbors. Staff does recommend approval of this rezoning request. And that concludes staff report.
Questions for Shawna? All right, thank you. Is petitioner, please. State your name and address for the record.
Name, Tom Wiseman, at 7512 West 15th Street. And like Shawna said, what we're proposing is we'd like to do an RA 1 due to the neighboring properties, one to the north which is commercial, northwest which is apartments, the east is the interstate, and the infrastructure of Sioux Falls going through with Ebenezer going through. And due to the location of the property, we think it's more marketable for having a multi-family zoning. Is there any questions?
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak in the silent?
I'm Mike Brown. I have a, I live at 635 South Byron T., South Dakota. I have, currently have a lot out there in Graceland addition. And I bought this lot out there in intent of, it was a twin home development in a lot in a twin home. And now with private roads and association, and now what he's looking at doing is four plexes, which we have no knowledge if they're single family, or I mean, a single-story, double-story, or what he's doing. I guess I'm not saying I'm against it or for it. I'd just like to find out a little information about it. And I've talked to a few of the neighbors and nobody has really heard too much about it. And what I would like to see is if it's possible to get a 30-day deferral and have him get together and just have a meeting, sit down with the Wisemans, and just see what he's really looking at doing out there. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mike? All right, thank you. Anyone else care to speak on this item?
Paul Carlson. I live at the address of 4516 Graceland Place. I am a concerned resident in the area and I would just like to express the same things that Mr. Brown expressed. What we'd like to be able to see is possible layout and design, full scale. I have a home back there, a single-family home, and some of the other residents that do have homes back there, what we're worried about is that we have homes that are $200,000 plus in appraisal values. And that not knowing what these multi-family units are going to sell for, or what they're going to look like, that it could affect our appraisal values and that we could lose value on our existing properties. Any questions?
Questions for Paul?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak on this item?
Hello, my name's Brian Wiseman. I'm a partner with Tom on this development here. I live at 7504 T. Area Circle. We purchased this property. It was in repossession. It's been in repossession since 2002. The land out there has been just sitting vacant since then. The people that are living out there, we've talked to each and every one of them. Paul Carlson, we've talked to him before we come out here. He didn't have any complaints. And Mike Brown, he was one of the neighbors that was, kind of wanted to know what was going on, and we called him up and told him what was going on. We've contacted the city. The road out there needs a second lift on it. The city was in the process of getting their attorneys out here to find out who the landowners were, to see who they could assess to get the second lift put on there. We have contacted them and told them that we are going to take care of that in that neighborhood. The neighborhood is, they had some twin homes sitting out there that were just in the two-by-four framing stage since 2002. We're going out there fixing them up. We've contacted all the homeowners out there. And the ones that are taking care of their property don't have any complaint here. The ones that aren't taking care of their property or are looking at some assessments of getting it approved are the ones that are complaining. We've offered that each one that owns a twin home, that we own half of it or they own the other half, that we would come in there and repaint the whole building at no cost to them. We're going to come in there and take care of the streets, the second lift on the streets, so there is no cost to the city or the city attorneys. We have had, since we've done this, we've had, the appraiser that went out and did the appraisal on this, went out there, found that one, one of the homeowners there were having dogs locked up on the deck. And he had to call the city for a nuisance ordinance on, on manure and everything that she was just washing off into the backyard. And we're taking care of all that problem out there. We're trying to clean it up. We have one homeowner out there that runs a barbecue business on the street there. I mean, he's got a barbecue running every day and it's on, and it will be a city street. It's a 30-foot wide street, which is, we're going to be taken care of and things of that nature. So it's a development that's in badly need of some, taken care of. And we've decided to come out there and take on the task out there and to make a better and nicer place for the people to live out there. Any questions?
Questions for Brian?
Mr. Chair, Brian, I, I think we all probably appreciate the direction that you're taking, but my question is, do you have any more concrete plans for the units and how they might be arranged?
Yes, we have, on the outskirts of that, we have, we've planned for some condominium use, which are two-story buildings, which are in the covenances right now that there can be single or two-story buildings out there. We've got two-story buildings going out there with a single-stall attached garage to them with a, for the condominiums around the outside. Now, on the interior, where the streets go around, we're still batting around, you know, because of the twin homes in there, you know, if we threw a two-story building up in front of them, they're not going to look very good. So we're, we're looking at redesigning some single-story buildings to kind of match in with that, to keep the neighborhood, we have just as much interest in keeping the neighborhood looking good and viable, simply because there's five people out there that own buildings out there, or six, and we have 18 lots plus nine twin homes to sell out there. So we have a vested interest in this out here.
What's your schedule for starting construction?
We'd like to start construction on condominiums yet this fall. The twin homes out there, we've already started. We've already went out there and started mowing the lawns out there, getting rid of the weeds and thistles. We're going in Friday with bulldozers and graders to grade the exterior, that the thistles are, you know, too tall to get, we've tried to get a mower out there and a tractor out there, and it was just too rough to do that. So now we're going to get an excavator out there and a scraper to clean that up. We've already started the ones that are framing. Next week, we're probably going to get them re-inspected again. We pull permits on all of them and get them all back into shape.
Mr. Wiseman, would a 30-day deferral, obviously your neighbors don't have a concept plan that they have seen. Would a neighborhood meeting and a 30-day deferral get you in a position that you can meet with your neighbors, satisfy their concerns?
No, probably not.
If you're not going to do anything till fall...
Well, we're just looking to get some foundations in the ground before the freeze hits, which, you know, if it's 30 days, and then another 30 days after that, you know, we're talking 90 days basically by the time we're approval. Well, then you're up into October and it gets a little late to get some stuff in the ground, simply because we have to, before we put the second lift on the street for the, some of it, we have to redo, some, some of the utilities are not in the right spot, so we have to tear up a little bit of the street before we put the second lift on the street yet this fall.
Did you have a neighborhood meeting?
We have talked to each and every homeowner there. We have not had a neighborhood meeting. One person that is a deaf couple there, we've been, we've been talking back and forth to them on phone. We've actually got an interpreter coming to talk to them tomorrow night about some concerns that they have. And they didn't have any concerns about what we were doing, they were just wondering what, about what we were going to do to their house and stuff, and how to paint it and what colors and stuff.
Okay.
I have a question. And of the people that you tried to contact, how many, how many did you visit?
There, we've talked to Paul Carlson, and at the time that we talked to him, he did not have a complaint about it. His simple concern was, okay, I'll let you guys do whatever you want here as long as I want to put a shed up here so I can run my lawn care business out of it. And we didn't say nothing to him. But then we saw some footings going in the ground the other day, and I called up and asked if there was a building permit pulled on that. And I didn't call back and ask Cleo, but Cleo actually told me that he did not have one on record, so.
But other than Paul, you visited with other people that you tried?
Yeah. And yeah, we have talked, we've talked to each and every homeowner out there.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we'll close public testimony on this, this item. Is there commission action on item seven?
I would have to say because of the concerns from the neighbors and, and no presentation of a solid concept plan, I would make a motion for a deferral of this item for 30 days.
I second.
There's a motion and second to defer. Is there commission action?
I have a question for staff. Because of the timing with late meeting this month, and we do a 30-day deferral, that would put it until September...
Right. I guess that maybe the motion should be until the next regular planning commission, which would be August 1st. So technically, it's not a 30-day deferral till the August 1st meeting.
That's what you mean.
Yes, I'll clarify that to the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission.
Okay, thanks.
That's the assumption. All right. Very good. Any other commission discussion? All right, all those in favor of a 30-day deferral, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Item, item seven is deferred until the next regular meeting. Item eight is our next item on the regular agenda, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property at 301 South Lake Avenue from the RA 1 Residential District to the C 2 General Commercial District, petition number 2007-06-21, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Staff report.
Thank you. The applicant and owner on this particular item is Dale Zomer, and he's been working closely with Kevin from BHI, who's here to speak this evening as well. The applicant is proposing to remove an existing single-family home and construct a new structure and expand the motor vehicle sales business that's located to the south. The applicant has indicated that a petition to vacate Lake Avenue will be provided to the City Engineering Department. The vacation of the street is not acted on by this body and is approved by the City Council, but there, if there's anybody who discusses that this evening, the applicant has indicated that they would try to vacate that segment of Lake Avenue between 12th and 11th. The site will be combined with the property to the south, and they'll have street frontage on 12th Street. The, there is residential driveways to the east, west, and north. Sidewalks are provided in the neighborhood and will be required along all public streets with the redevelopment of this site. Access to the site will be modified and incorporated into the area of the bigger site. The aerial photography does not reflect the current conditions. As you may recall, last summer, the South Dakota Highway 42 was reconstructed and those driveways that are depicted on our 2004 aerials are no longer there. There is a change in grade of this site approximately 16 feet, a fall between 12th and 11th Street. There is a retaining wall on the site which will be removed with the redevelopment. The concept plan depicts a building which will require 14 parking spaces. Any additional parking on the site will be available for motor vehicle display. Staff does note that Axdale Middle School is in the neighborhood, two blocks to the northwest. Emerson Park is located two blocks to the south. Staff notes no churches or on-sale establishments in the immediate proximity. The applicant has met with surrounding property owners to discuss the project and is here to discuss the project this evening, as well as surrounding property owners who are concerned with the project. The applicant has provided the necessary information to describe the intent of the request, and because the application allows for redevelopment with the overall intent of improvement to the area and requires further review of a conditional use plan, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning. And that concludes staff report.
Questions for Shawna?
Shawna, it's not very clear to me from the drawings how, how they'll provide screening on the backside towards 11th Street.
The applicant's here this evening, it's just a concept plan, it's, it's not quite refined to the level that we would see with a conditional use permit. So they're here to answer any questions regarding additional site improvements over and above what they're showing on their concept plan.
Would we see them beyond this rezon application for the conditional use permit?
Absolutely. Yes, a conditional use permit would be required because of the expansion of the car lot.
Any other questions? Thank you, Shawna. The applicant, please.
Kevin Hustrelid of 115 Highway, South Dakota Highway at Harrisburg. I represent BHI Construction. I guess one of the first things I'd like to address is your screening issues, and we do have a slide presentation, if you could bring that up. There's a few, this is, this is showing a few of the instances that are happening on the current lot. This is Zomer Motors. There is a retaining wall that is on Lake Street. These are beginning shots, as that is their approach. And viewing down into the property that we look to incorporate, that is the retaining wall, and we would be removing that entirely and incorporating the land or the building so that the lot was, was flat on the very top. And then there would be a driveway coming around the other side and actually having a detail shop underneath. Go ahead. Currently, well, this is part of that same retaining wall, they have drains coming off. We would get all that incorporated into a good program that would vacate that water from the property in ways that it wouldn't impact the neighborhood. Again, we're coming around to the portion where the detailing shop is, there's another retaining wall, and so it originally was built, and I believe back when it was the dairy retaining wall, and said originally was built, and I believe back when it was the Dairy Dream, I think it was, Dairy Dream at one time. Um, Dairy Queen? Dairy Queen, okay. And I believe this is a retaining wall that was actually made up of mostly broken, uh, sidewalk. Uh, that would be coming out. The building here would be coming out, and all that would be incorporated into a slope that would accommodate the water runoff. And here is another retaining wall that would be removed, and that would be the, the exposure, the west exposure of the new building where the detail shop would be at. Here is part of what we'd like to incorporate with our screening. This is an existing pine tree that is on the eleventh street side, and this is another view of that same pine tree with another pine tree next to it. We would like to some way incorporate that and keep that. I believe it's going to be in our, in our ten-foot setback area that we're going to be required for green space. And they're very well-established trees. That one to the left is probably about fifteen feet. The one next to that is about probably twelve feet tall. And then another tree, and this is to the neighborhood side. This is another large tree. We would probably be trying to do some trimming and still maintain these two, and then bring some type of screening, either be vegetation, or it be, uh, some type of a fence, or whatever we're needing. That is part of what we're trying to determine tonight, is if this is appropriate use for this zoning, if we can move forward, we will get these, these items finalized, we'll get more pricing on it, and we'll, uh, define more of the area of what we're going to be doing. But the, the concept right now is to try and maintain as mu- as much of this old growth vegetation as possible, and maintain as little impact to the, the neighborhood as possible, if maintaining no impact to the neighborhood. The other requirements that are, are of the zoning are that, uh, you know, the, the lighting not be shining onto the, to the residential area. We intend fully to adhere by the, the zoning requirements, and, um, trying to, to minimize, in fact, is actually improve some of the impact on the neighborhood to the residential areas. Um, go ahead. I think we got one more. No, that was the end of it. Those are the shots that we have. But I think you can see that what we're, we're intending to do is a, a very much an improvement to the area, uh, you know, as far as getting rid of some, um, items that may even be, uh, dangerous to small children playing in that area, if they're up on those retaining walls. And just a general improvement, um, I, I'm trying to make sure, and, and we do have the people here from the, from the residential areas representing, I think we got pretty much everybody, and some of the businesses that are around, and, um, it'd be more than willing to turn it over and let them speak. Do you have any questions from me?
Questions for Kevin? Let's, let's take these right now.
So relative to access, if you're, if you're vacating Lake Street, you would access not from eleventh street, but only off of twelfth street, drive through into the lot because the actual entrance into the shop is gonna come from the west?
The vacate would be twelve, would be Lake Street, and that would be also used then as the access.
So you would have an entrance point off of twelfth street on what was formerly Lake Street, and then you would have another a- access point somewhere off of twelfth street farther west?
Correct.
You'd have two curb cuts, in a sense, coming into?
Basically be lake. It would basically be lake, and then we'd be allowed, we would be allowed parking next to it.
Okay.
That's, that's what we're trying to achieve, is basically pick up some parking in that area.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Kevin, I can't tell from this picture, is there currently overhead lighting?
Pardon me?
Is there currently overhead lighting in this?
That is correct.
Right.
I guess you've never been there in the evening, so I really didn't, you know, it's near in the daytime, you don't notice it.
Other questions for Kevin?
Again, uh, what we're looking at doing is, is, is where the building would sit, and if you notice how far we're, we're pushing that back on the properties, uh, we're actually trying to bring the lighting closer to the twelfth street and keep it away from the, from the residential area, because the, the cars would be focused on the, on the area closest to twelfth street, with the building being located towards the north.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item?
Good evening. Um, my name is Pam Sabo. I live at three hundred Southwest Avenue. Can you bring that slide back up that has like the, at the overhead view with all the cars and everything? That one?
Okay.
Um, our garage is right on that alley, that white building that's towards the top of the screen of, no, down, right there. That's our garage, and then that's our lot off to the, um, left of that. Um, one of our main concerns is the access to the car lots. I think if they have to use Lake Avenue to access that, it's gonna divert a lot of that traffic onto West Eleventh. West Eleventh has parking on both sides of the street, and it's a pretty narrow street. There's only sidewalks on one side, and so if there's cars parked on both sides of the street, it only allows one car to pass that area at a time. Also, there are a lot of kids in that area, and especially my house, I have three grandchildren. So we're concerned that the increased traffic flow, as well as the type of traffic. Um, currently, I think a lot of the people that shop at Zomer's are younger because of the type of cars that they do sell. It's not like they have, you know, they're, they're nice cars. So we have a problem a lot of times with people just flying down that eleventh street. Uh, most of the time, that alley's blocked off, so they can't utilize the alley. So they go down Lake, and then they turn down eleventh street. So that's one of our main concerns, is the access to the parking lot, or to the, the lot itself. Um, another concern is the noise. There are many nights where there'll be deliveries, like at twelve or one o'clock at night, they're dropping off cars. And I can see the lot directly from my bedroom window, and so when the car lot has those deliveries late at, in the evening, I don't know, it's not, you know, I, I don't notice it frequently, but it does happen. It does increase the noise. We have car alarms that go off quite frequently. I'm sure that's probably because of kids playing in that area. I don't know. Um, kids that do come at night to look at the cars, they drive up there after the lot is closed, and then they leave their radios blaring. Doors are open, they're out looking at all the different cars, so we get to hear most of that noise as well. And, uh, I'm concerned with trash. We've had a lot of, whenever it gets windy, a lot of that trash flows over into our yards. I've got Zomer signs and stuff from, from all the different areas that seems to end up in my lot. Um, let's see. Also, I've got petitions. I started a petition for our neighborhood, and I do have seven signatures of that immediate area, which is directly across on eleventh street there. And then I've got signatures that are going down Lake, um, on the other side of eleventh, that have, um, uh, indicated that they choose not to have this rezoned.
Do you have a picture?
Sure. I just don't have it, um, certified yet. We, we're only received the notices when those, uh, rezoning notices went up, which was the third of July. So I haven't had a whole lot of time to meet with all of the neighbors that were listed, um, on the notice. Also, if it does pass, we wanna make sure that we're included in the conditional requirements of that area, so that it does not make it look, um, aesthetically displeasing. I believe it, our neighborhood has gotten to the point where it just, it just doesn't look good anymore. But on the other side of eleventh street, those homes and those yards and stuff are very well kept up. Um, I'm also concerned with snow removal. Where are they gonna put all that snow when they have to clean the parking lot? I mean, there's really no place to put it. And, uh, I think that's about it.
Okay. Questions for Pam?
Pam, I think I understand where your garage is at.
Right.
Is that an alley that goes along?
There, that is an alley, and I, for, it's just not, it's blocked a lot of times, so people can't really drive up and down. And so I think right now that they're accessing Zomer's from Lake Avenue. So my concern is that they block off, you know, any of those drives or entrances, it's gonna result into people either leaving and going down eleventh, or they have to go through eleventh to get there.
As we go down from your garage, these other garages, are they other neighbors' garages?
Um, that's a business.
Okay. Is that part of the, uh, car lot?
No. It's, it's, um, lickety-split.
Okay. Thank you, Pam.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Pam?
So Pam, in your mind, is there any kind of screening that could run along that west side that might actually be helpful to you that doesn't currently exist?
Oh, definitely.
Because there, there would be an opportunity,
Sure.
you know, to do that, uh, running clear, you know, north to south up and along that west side.
Right. I mean, if it were my choice, I'd like to see foliage of some sort, um, just because it looks better in a neighborhood than a bunch of fences. Um, I don't want it to look like a maze. But, um, right now, there is, there's nothing that blocks anything from that, um, car lot, even the way it stands right now. I can't see over to the residence because our garage blocks that view, but you can see right through our backyard onto the Zomer's lot. And like, there'll be times, I mean, it's not Zomer's fault, but there'll be skateboarders, you know, at twelve o'clock at night, things like that. And I'm sure that's just part of business. You're gonna have things like that happen, but...
Because there really could be a chance for overall site improvement in this.
There should, there could be, yes. I just am concerned that, um, the neighborhood's gonna be overtaken and turned all into commercial, and then, you know, here we are, the only, lonely house on the block, so.
Pam, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said as what you'd prefer.
Oh, I said, I, if, if, if this passes, I would prefer a foliage type of, uh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak on this item?
Uh, my name is Lyle Keys. I live at twenty-four hundred and a half Southwest Avenue, but I'm also right in the process of purchasing a thirteen-eleven West Eleventh Street, which is across the street on Lake Avenue from this property. Uh, I see no problem in what plans that were showed to me, and their ideas of trying to maintain as much of the old foliage, and, and how she liked to put more new stuff in, that everything is, like she says, now I'm buying this, I'm completely remodeling this house, and I'm sticking a lot of money into it. New siding, I mean, it's gonna be the nicest house in the neighborhood, I think, what I've got, so. Uh, I have no problem with this, and, um, closing off Lake Street, the idea, as you're talking about kids, well, you know, Lake Street has a direct access to the water park on Kofa Lake. I've seen kids come down that sixteen-foot drop thirty miles an hour through that intersection, cars slamming on their brakes, so I mean, it's very unsafe intersection, eleventh and Lake. I mean, the yield sign, put a stop sign in there or something, but when kids come through that intersection downhill there, it's, it's fast, it's dangerous. I see that as a point for closing it. But on closing it, I know I wanna, like, maintain my property access on that side. So I'm, would have to like to see more of the plans when it's presented to the street department, but, but I am in favor of this rezoning. I've seen their plans, and compared to the building that's sitting on the lot now, I know it'll increase the value of my property, as it'll increase the value of the other property across the street, which are all nice homes. So, that's what I'd say.
All right. Questions for Lyle? All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else care to speak on this item? Don't see any. Is there, uh, commission action?
Um, I think that, in light of what we've heard tonight, I would make a motion to approve the rezon. I think we've certainly heard some things tonight that should be taken into consideration in the final development plan, knowing that we're gonna get a chance to take a strong look at that, and if we don't see what we like at that point, we have the opportunity to deal with it. Um, but I think that there's the opportunity for some improvement overall in this site, and maybe the opportunity to bring some benefit to some of the neighbors' concerns, and that in light of trying to move the process forward, I would make that motion for approval tonight.
Anita, I'll second that motion. I, I couldn't concur more. I think, um, some of the lighting issues that they talk about now, uh, will completely be taken care of it, as well as maybe some of the traffic issues, so I would second that motion.
Any other discussion?
It's my understanding that to enlarge this, uh, car lot, they will have to come back for a conditional use permit?
Correct.
Will Pam and her neighbors, uh, it'll be an open forum? Uh, it'll be posted again, and they will have the opportunity to come back and, uh, critique or, uh, the plan, so to speak. It might be a good idea for, I believe it was Kevin, to maybe get Pam's name and number. And, uh, there are some people that signed a petition here, uh, that have some concerns about it, and it might be a good idea to have a little input from those folks in the final plan.
Strongly encourage a neighborhood meeting and input from the neighborhood. All right, there's a motion and a second on item number eight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Item eight is recommended for approval. The next item on the regular agenda is item eighteen, which is a public hearing, two thousand eight through two thousand twelve capital improvement program. Mr. Van Beltheisen, it's yours.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Dave Van Beltheisen, and it's been my pleasure for the last few years to serve as the liaison between the, the city of Sioux Falls Planning Commission and the Capital Improvement Program, which is also known as the CAP program. We have, uh, looked at this over the years in different formats, but I think tonight, what I would like to talk a little bit about is maybe establishing some reasons for, uh, reviewing the reasons for having a capital improvement program. There's a couple illustrations that we wanna go through, and I would just like to read the first one, to establish the purpose of a capital improvement program. It's a formally adopted five-year capital improvement program that's prepared by a CAP committee based on project requests from city departments. The plan is updated annually with, with approval by the planning commission and the city council. The CAP committee consists of representatives and department directors of the city of Sioux Falls departments. It also consisted of two non-city employees, one being Carl Tangis and one being myself. This process starts in the very early spring, where there is a number of, uh, hearings that the, uh, various directors come to. We block out time for each department to talk about some of the projects that they have going, some of the projects that they would like to see, and, uh, that consists of, of needs and wishes by the various departments. After that is submitted, we then compare their request, which consists of estimated cost against the anticipated revenue, and normally, as always, there's more requests than there is money, so there's a process of prioritizing those, those projects. The second illustration is another statement that I think is important to talk about. This is on page one oh one of your, uh, of your CAP draft, which you have received either electronically or in hard copy. Uh, understanding that this is a draft budget that the CA committee, CAP committee recommends to the mayor, the mayor then makes this recommendation to the city council. So tonight, what we're looking for is, is a recommendation for approval of the, from the city, uh, from the city of Sioux Falls Planning Commission. Another statement that I think is important to talk about is on page one oh one. In order, in order to implement the development plan and provide for orderly growth and coordination of public improvements, the city has initiated a formal capital improvement budgeting process. Again, this is a five-year process, or a five-year budget, with the first year being, being, uh, pretty solid, the second year being a little bit solid, the other ones will be a little bit fluid. But it does provide opportunity for the developers and people in the development community, uh, and particularly for the, uh, various departments, to see where the development is going and coming, and try to develop, uh, projects and add projects that'll help meet that need. The next, next statement is also found on page one oh one. The capital improvement program allows for all projects to be identified and programmed for construction in advance of actual need. Projects generally conform to needs in the planned growth area and existing areas of the city as projected in the comprehensive development plan. Again, these are projects that are covering not only new that are covering not only new development, but also updating of existing infrastructure. On page one, "Growth management is a comprehensive program to determine the types, locations, and phasing of land uses. Growth management also provides for economical provision of city services by coordinating public facility improvement with private development." Again, the development community is working hand-in-hand in this process. Your CAP or Capital Improvement Program is divided into various departments, and the sections are in various departments. And as you see, that it represents a significant amount of money. This, the proposed budget for 2008 is a little over $146 million. The program over five years has a recommended budget of just under a half a billion dollars. So it's a significant amount of money that is, that is programmed and recommended, again, projects identified as the needs. The, the slide is before you right here, I have no idea where that one came from. I think staff is slipping this one into me. Is this, apparently what this is, is 2008 through 2012 are some rather large or sizable dollar amounts that are needed. And again, this money comes from sales tax, it comes from federal grants, it comes from state grants. Some of the, some of the money comes from enterprise funds, and enterprise funds would be typically your water reclamation and your water treatment, where they only spend the amount of money that they have coming in, and there's not usually some tax dollars involved in that. Again, the, as you look at the slide here, one of the big projects, the top projects that has a huge amount of visibility in the community is a lucid art project. The second item, which is engineering street preservation, that's a really important project because the streets and the infrastructure inside of those streets have a built-in timeframe where they become inadequate. And so the public engineering, the city engineering has done a great job of identifying where you need to go into neighborhoods and redo streets, curb and gutters, and some of the utilities. What's your next slide? That's it? That's the only slide you got? Okay. The, I think it's important to think about or understand kind of what some of the projects are. Those are identified by department in your book. They are identified by need justification from the departments, and also where the revenues are coming from. And that is a very complex issue. There's always some budgeting and finance people there to help us explain that, so... Last slide? Nope, go back to last slide. Okay. Capital Improvement Program is available on the SiouxFalls.org website. It'll be for everybody to read in for some late evening. It's also important to understand that there's a public hearing for, again, for the 2008 CAP program, which is Monday, July 16th at 7:00 p.m. here in the Carnegie Town Hall. And that'll be an opportunity for the people in the community to give public input on the process. So those end my remarks, and I'd be happy to handle any questions or take any questions. But again, what we're looking for here is a recommendation of the draft budget to the city council.
Questions for David?
David, I would just like to commend you for all of the time that you have spent on this committee. I realize it's very time-consuming, but I'm sure it was very educational, too.
Thank you, Pam. And it really was, and it is. It takes a pretty fair amount of time to understand where the revenue sources are coming from, how the projects are funded, why they're funded in various ways. And it's a reflection also of a lot of hard work on the city staff part of not, of being able to find money and be able to transfer funds and so forth to make projects come alive in parts of the year, in different parts of the year, and so forth. So appreciate his comments.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you for your service on the committee.
You're welcome.
All right. We're looking for a recommendation of approval of the draft.
Mr. Chair, if you wouldn't mind if we could, this is supposed to be a public hearing, so if you could see if there's anyone in the audience that would like to talk about the CAP.
Thank you.
Anyone care to comment on the CAP presentation? If there is none, I'm looking for a recommendation of approval of this draft.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the draft of the CAP Capital Improvement Program.
Second. It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item 18 is recommended for approval. Item 19 is a review of a conditional use permit at 1001 West 11th Street in the C2 General Commercial District to allow on-sale alcohol establishment as a primary use. Staff report, please.
Sorry about that brief technical difficulty. This review of the conditional use permit, you may recall, was for La Labello Restaurant. There, in November of 2006, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit for an on-sale alcohol establishment with six conditions. I'm gonna save time and not read through those. If you have any questions about those conditional conditions for that conditional use permit, they are included in your addendum, or, excuse me, in your packet. You may recall, that conditional use permit was approved with two reviews, a six-month and a year review. In February of 2007, we did our six-month review, and there was no negative comments taken at that review. I'm happy to report this evening that there have been no police calls in the last six months. On June 4th, a crime prevention officer did report this information to the city council at the time that the renewal of the beer license was acted on. The zoning has not received any complaints regarding this property. Previous attempts to hold a neighborhood meeting were unsuccessful because of lack of attendance. The applicant was unable to provide any further neighborhood meetings due to no one showing up. The applicant did contact staff about operating on New Year's Eve, which was a Sunday this year, and one of your conditions is that they can't serve alcohol on Sundays. Staff reiterated that the condition of the conditional use permit only allowed late hours on Friday and Saturday and would not allow a Sunday New Year's Eve party. The applicant would like conditions of the conditional use permit lifted. Many patrons of the establishment work shift hours and do not arrive until after midnight. Staff notes that these conditions may be amended at the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting, August 1st, and it is the applicant's intent to provide that information and request next month. Staff has performed a review, and the action by the Planning Commission should be to acknowledge the review. I see the applicant is here this evening. If you have any questions or comments regarding this review.
Okay. Any questions for Shawna? I'm gonna open it up to the public if there's anyone that would like to comment on this item. The applicant would like to comment, that'd be fine.
Lou Gaita and I here, 1001 West 11th Street, La Labello Restaurant.
Do you have a favorable review? Do you have anything else to add?
As you listen, there is no anything.
Okay. All right. That's all we need. Is there any questions on the commission? All right. Thank you. Anyone else care to comment on this one? If not, the only action that we need is acknowledgement of a favorable review. No motion is needed. The next item is item 20, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property at 1410 West 17th Street and 829 and 831 South Lake Avenue from the RS2 Residential District to the O Office District. Petition number 2007-06-03, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Staff report.
Thank you. The applicant in this case is Don Coiman, representing Sanford USD Medical Center. The district of the O Office District is intended to provide developing and redeveloping areas primarily consisting of a mixture of office and other types of compatible and complementary commercial uses. This district is intended to be along arterial streets, close to the proximity of commercial uses, or used as a transition zone between commercial and residential uses. Because of the interface of this district, we'll provide with residential areas, an emphasis will be put on the quality of development regarding landscaping, setbacks, and site arrangements. The applicant is proposing to include a Make-A-Wish facility on this site after rezoning. A concept plan has been provided, although it is not drawn to scale. Staff notes that the conventional office building with 2,000 square feet as shown will require seven parking spaces. The concept plan indicates five. The rezoning request has been changed at this public hearing to the conventional O Office District and will act as a transitional land use between the hospital and the residential neighborhood. Because the application does show the transitional land uses and will be compatible with the residential neighborhood, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning to the O Office District. And that concludes staff report.
Questions for Shawna?
Shawna, is this a new use for existing building?
I believe that they're gonna clear the site and build a new building.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Is the petitioner here, please?
I'm Melissa Radigan with Sanford Medical Center, and 1305 West 18th. And we are working with the Make-A-Wish Foundation to provide enough land for them to be able to build a new office location. And so as the petition states, we are going to enter into a long-term land lease, and the construction of the facility or their office and parking will be their responsibility. If you would like some information, you know, it is still a concept drawing, but if you'd like some information on what they know at this point regarding the office. Mary Olinger for Make-A-Wish is here.
Okay. Hang on just a second. Any questions for Melissa? All right. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item?
I'm Mary Olinger with the Make-A-Wish Foundation. Our office at, right now, is at 1010 West 18th Street. It's our hope and our intent to build a freestanding office building on the 829, 831 South Lake and 1410 West 17th lots. Our plan, hopefully, is to build a one-story building with a basement, and hopefully it will be very aesthetically nice-looking for the neighborhood. Do you have any questions?
Questions for Mary?
Mary.
Mary, Make-A-Wish, that would be an eight-to-five type of establishment?
Pretty much so. The only thing I will tell you, it's a very quiet location. It'll be very quiet in the neighborhood, very little traffic. On occasion, there will be some evening meetings, but very limited.
Other questions?
Mary, one question. You said that you are currently on West 18th, so you have moved out of the Avera office that you used to handle.
We have.
Okay.
We have grown considerably. We've moved from 800 square feet to 2,400, and we're hoping to go to 4,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to speak on this item?
Yes. My name is Fay Gallagher, and I live in that vicinity. And I have driven down 17th Street...
Can you just give us your address, please?
Oh, 721 South Euclid.
Thank you.
And to visit some people. And from the end of South Euclid on 17th Street, it is filled with cars, and there's no place to park. So I'm wondering, is that gonna be rectified with this new business coming in? That's all I want to know.
Okay. Where, Steph, where's Shawna? This is a rezon, it'll be a conditional use permit.
Right. And when they build the building, before they get a building permit, a plan check will take place, and any parking requirements for the new building will have to be met on-site.
And that's all in the ordinance on some of these spaces?
Right. Yep. They'll have to provide one space for every 300 square feet of new building, on-site, in a parking lot.
Thank you.
Shawna, is it one space per 300, or is it also taking off the number of employees?
No. For an office building, and that's what we would treat this as, it doesn't have, the number of employees is not included in the calculation for the required parking. It's solely based on the number of square feet of the building.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. On item 20, is there commission action?
Mr. Chairman, I'll recommend approval of item number 20.
I'll second.
It's a motion and a second. Is there commission discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item 20 is recommended for approval. Item 21 is an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property at 5109 South Cliff Avenue from the O General Office District to the Quail Crest Plan Development District. Petition number 2007-06-23, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Sioux Falls. Staff report.
Thank you. The applicant and owner of this property is Bert Collers. Dennis Bresky is also representing Mr. Collers and the Quail Crest Shops, LLC. The purpose of the rezoning, and I want to give you a little background history, after much input and several neighborhood meetings, the parcel was rezoned from RS1 Residential to the O Office District in December of 2003. Staff did not support commercial zoning at this location at that time, and O Office was allowed as a transition between the future grocery store at the time and the commercial uses to the north. The existing single-family uses to the south agreed to the O Office District. In October of 2006, a similar request to this one was presented to the Planning Commission, which would allow, would have allowed, limited commercial uses in the Quail Crest Plan Development District, and that was recommended for denial by the Planning Commission, and then ultimately withdrawn by the applicant. The applicant is here this evening to propose a Plan Development District, which offers limited commercial land uses, and the proposed subarea regulation and that list of land uses are included in your addendum packet. Since the 2003 rezoning, the neighborhood and neighboring property owners have played an active role in site development. These neighbors have continued to express opposition to the commercial zoning. Staff has indicated to these homeowners that there would be support for the neighborhood, and commercial uses would be strongly reviewed, and we would be here to support whatever the neighborhood decided they wanted. The site was developed as a multi-tenant building. There is parking on the west and the east. The site does slope up on the west of the site. Housing is located to the west, and the housing is at a higher elevation than the building or the parking on the site. The applicant did not hold a neighborhood meeting, however, has been in contact with several of the neighboring property owners. Support has been indicated since the time of the staff report, although there are certain neighbors that continue to oppose the commercial land uses. The applicant is here this evening to discuss the impacts at this public hearing. I did put together a map that depicts the various letters of support and opposition that we've received. You notice that the green dots are those that are supportive of the rezoning, and those dots that are red are those people that have indicated opposition. We have, I've received, we've been continuing to receive letters of support, and I've been... trying to add those as they've come in. I've been receiving faxes and mailings. I did have one letter of support that someone did recant this afternoon, so I changed that dot from a green one to a red one. So I think this is the most current and up-to-date information that I can provide you. And staff does find that the office is an appropriate land use for land use transition. Our recommendation previously was for denial, and we are here to support the neighborhood, and so whatever the neighborhood presents to you, I would hope that you would support whatever the neighborhood wants here, because it has a lot of history. And that concludes staff report.
Questions for Shauna?
Shauna, did I hear you say that there was one adjoining land owner that supported and then no longer supports and is not-
Correct, yes.
Not supporting that?
Correct.
Your reasons given?
They, they indicated that they had more time to think about it and got more, had a better understanding of what the proposal was, and so therefore were not supportive any longer.
Shauna, would you explain that line that you've got there? That circle around-
Okay, sure. You'll notice that the subject property is bolded, and the buffer area between there is at two hundred and fifty feet. That is the area of the protest petition area. If this went to the city council and those property owners that own property within two hundred and fifty feet of the subject property, if they felt that they didn't like the city council's action, say they approved it, denied it, whatever, those property owners that are within two hundred and fifty feet, if forty percent of those sign a protest petition within twenty days after the city council action, that would kick it back to the city council for another vote. So that the area indicated on there is what we call the protest area.
Shauna, this has been before this commission before and denied. Has that ever been appealed to the city council?
The last time that the Planning Commission had the similar application, the applicant subsequently withdrew the application prior to any action by the city council. So it hasn't been before the council.
Thank you.
So Shauna, if I'm understanding what you just told us, and I'm looking at my dots, that means we have six green dots and five red dots in the protest area?
Right, well, and if that black line touches it, doesn't have to be all the way in it, it would be the black-
Right. So I counted that, it's-
Right, and, and remember that, that you don't count the two green ones within the subject property, because those are letters of support from the applicant themselves and one of their tenants.
So we have four green dots and five red dots?
One, two, three, four, five, six. I count six, three, because it touches, it just nicks the one that's in the very southwest corner there. Oh, so that's in.
So that's the one that changed, sorry?
Yes.
This is now red?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the one that changed.
Good call. I see.
Yes, so, and then it would include those property owners on the other side of Cliff Avenue too, because the two hundred and fifty feet would include any right-of-way-
Six red, three green.
Seven.
Seven.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I count seven. Because the dots might not be inside, but their property is touched by the circle, so then they would have an opportunity to sign that protest petition.
Okay, got it.
All right, other questions for Shauna? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Well, I'm Dennis Bresky with NAI Sioux Falls, and I live at nineteen oh nine Austin Drive, and I'm representing Mr. Collers here. Bert, you can introduce yourself.
Good evening, my name is Bert Collers. I live at seven fifty-three Indian Wells Court in Dakota Dunes.
We're back again here for a couple of reasons. Main one is that we'd like to get this, of course, accepted. But through the, through the process of working on this project for the last six months, we have had to turn away a cell phone store, a vitamin store, a gift shop, and it just really always bothered me that those types of uses would not be allowed in this type of a building. And because I cannot imagine how they would be bothersome to the neighbors. And so I kind of kept stewing on that, and I met with Mike Cooper and talked to him about it. I was actually meeting with him on another issue, and I said, you know, this just really bothers me, and I brought up the last time I was here, that there, there needs to be a different category of zoning to handle this situation where you have commercial next to residential. And I totally understand the, the two very legitimate concerns that I've heard from the neighbors is that they don't want food, they don't want alcohol, they don't want odor, and I totally understand that, and so does Mr. Collers. And we tried to address that in the, in our first effort, where we did a poor job the first time around. I, I'm in commercial real estate, but I don't do a lot of development work, and I'm not in front of the Planning Commission very often, and I don't understand this process that well. But what I have learned is that if you have neighborhood opposition, you better be prepared to roll up your sleeves and make sure you go out and talk with the other neighbors and try to get some, some support. And so this time around, we have done that, and we have talked to a lot of neighbors, and there's a lot of support for this project. There are a few people that are adamantly opposed to it, and some of them have, you know, their reasons that I'm sure you'll hear. Others, you know, have reasons that include, I don't want the competition. I have a building similar to that. I don't want any other commercial property, because they might take tenants from my building. Well, I don't think that's a real good reason to determine how to determine land use. It's, it's his excuse, and he feels strongly about it. So anyway, we, we didn't do a very good job in terms of working with the neighborhood. Neighborhood meeting did not go well, we talked about that last time. So this time, we just went directly to the neighbors, talked with them, a lot of them, and a lot of them support what we're doing. And so we feel much better about that. And we have, I think, twenty-five letters of support. I don't know if all the dots are up there, but there's, there's a lot of support out The, another point that I want to just kind of reiterate from the last time that I was here, I don't know how hard it is to fire this little machine up, but can I just turn that on?
Shauna? The-
If I can.
One of the, one of the issues to me is that this, this idea that I, that has been presented here, I believe if it had been discussed when the property was owned office, that it would have been a very viable idea for a lot of people. But they kind of took the whole five-acre piece, and they said we're going to treat it one way. And I don't know that this concept of taking the property and dividing it to where you have the, first of all, you have the Conservation Reserve District that's a buffer to the residential, and we're leaving the south lot as office zoning, that's a buffer, and now we have this super light commercial use that we're trying to put in the middle and with, to have those restrictions. And that really was never an option that was seriously considered by the planning staff, by the neighborhood, or by anybody else. I just don't think the idea was in anyone's head, and it just wasn't thrown out there. But I think it's a very viable idea, given the location of this property next to a grocery store, which is one of the heaviest commercial uses that you have out there. And we did this study last time we were here to look at other major intersections where you have two arterial streets, and the amount of commercial space that is located at those spaces. If you look at twenty-sixth and Sycamore, you have a total of seventy-four thousand square feet of commercial space that we counted. If you look at twenty-sixth and Marion, which is another very comparable intersection, you have fifty-nine thousand square feet. And then based on what we knew about this intersection with the Sunshine Foods, of course, we don't, we have that square footage not counted, that's about fifty thousand square feet right there, so that twelve thousand, twenty-two thousand was existing at the time we made this presentation. I guess the Walgreens was there. Anyway, we just feel that there's a need to have a certain amount of commercial at that intersection, and there's not a great deal in terms of comparable ones. So what we have done is presented a specific list of businesses. We have a database at Sioux Falls Commercial of all strip malls. We went through those strip malls and looked at the tenants that occupy those spaces. We handpicked the ones that we just felt were not, were not going to be bothersome to someone that might be living right next door, like a cell phone store. I just, that's why I keep coming back to it. Some of those uses, if I were living in the backyard, how is a cell phone store operating there going to bother me at any time? Or a gift store, or a vitamin store? And so those, what we want to do is just try to limit this process to those types of uses. And we really feel that, that that's a key, a key part of it. I don't want to do anything that's going to cause any, Clayton Jameson owns four lots right outside of this property to the, to the, to the west. He's been a client of mine for a long time. Bert Collers doesn't want to do anything that's going to send those people or make it harder for him to sell those lots, and I think Clayton is going to speak on our behalf here or in support of our efforts in a bit. Already covered that point. Covered that one. I guess the main thing that I would like to hear, if the opponents are here and speak and they don't mention it, I would like to know what uses we have on our list there are specifically offensive to them or that they feel would be bothersome to their, to their living in that neighborhood? Because we've been very careful to try to pick uses that are not going to be offensive, that will just fit in there and work. And so with that, I'll turn it over here to Bert Collers, the owner, to speak about a couple of things, will be answer to answer your questions, and then if, if we can have the opportunity to possibly speak again after the opponent speaks, we'd appreciate that.
Dennis, I do have a question.
Okay.
Did you give the neighbors this list to review?
Yes. This letter was sent to a lot of people.
Okay.
Mary.
I just wanted to make sure they've seen the list.
Yeah, we got the list from the phone city, I think. It was sent to a lot of people.
All right, thank you, Dennis. Just a reminder to, five minutes, please, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Dennis, and good evening to everybody again. I'd like to just mention a couple of things, is that we did talk to a lot of neighbors, we sent out about sixty different letters, and all those little green dots, that doesn't represent all the positive feedback we got. A lot of this stuff hasn't, hasn't come in yet. If you look at the left of my property, there's some, there's some vacant spots there that are owned by Clayton, there's no green dots on those. Wells Fargo Bank is directly south, and that's not an issue. And then right where that arrow is right now, that's a separate platted piece of property. And so in the beginning, when this zoning was changed to its current zoning, that piece and all of it was, was changed to office. Well, we replatted, yeah, the black and white would be good. Yeah, right there, no. If you look at that plat, that's an essential plat that has a lot to do with the comfort level for the neighbors. Lot one D remains as is. It doesn't get changed. And so that stays the way it was changed years ago. And the only piece we're talking about is lot one C. There's only a couple lots that are touched by that and really impacted, and Clayton owns most of those. The things that we heard and all the people we talked to, we sent two different mailings, and we actually talked to everybody that would answer their phone, and what we heard for the reasons that people said no were really only two things. And one was that increased traffic on Cliff. Well, you know, that, that's a major road and supposed to have traffic on it, and you can see the right-of-way is designed, it'll be a four-lane someday as the city grows. And the other one that we heard is that it'll just change again. You can't trust these developers, the person that owns this strip, because they're going to want to change it again. Well, my feedback would be, if you don't trust us, let's go ahead and do, let us do what we want to do and actually put a deed restriction and a covenant on the property that would forbid any other changes into the future. The type of impact businesses, if you go out, I don't know if you've gone out and stood on the property, but the types of uses we're talking about would have no impact on any of the neighbors. If you look south, there's that one D lot stays there, zoning changes, stays the same. If you look west, there's, there's one neighbor there, we're willing to go in and, and put some additional planting. And then all the rest of the lots are owned by Clayton. He thinks it's a great idea. He thinks it'll be able to enhance his ability to sell his lots, having, and if you look at a lot of cities, having close neighborhood full services available is a good thing. The PD that we're suggesting would limit, of course, fast food. I wouldn't want it there either. And also liquor sales or those types of businesses. So the businesses we're looking at would blend really well into what's already there. So this is a planning we got from Jim Herro today, he drew this up for us. If you look on the, my left-hand side, we're proposing planting evergreen trees that'll eventually provide a nice shield for that whole, that whole strip area though, there. So thank you for your time tonight.
Hang on just a second, Bert. Any questions?
I'm just curious, the drawing that we're looking at here, Mr. Collers, is that the footprint of the existing building?
Yes, sir. That is the footprint of lot one C that we want to have rezoned, and that is the existing building.
And that is the footprint of the existing building?
Yes, sir.
But lot one D would allow for an office use application in there?
One D would keep its, the same zoning it has now.
Which, which is O Office now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't drive around on the, on the backside. Does that employee parking exist the way that it is today?
Employee parking is back there like that, yes.
So truly what you would be adding, or what you would say you would stipulate into this would be the addition of those evergreen coniferous trees on the backside? Those are not currently there?
They're not currently there.
Okay.
And we, you know, we'd be glad to negotiate the density of that, so it would, it'd provide a great screen, and that's a good point. The building is there, it's built to code specs, and planting those trees would be a benefit to everybody in that subdivision.
I'm sorry, one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you say that you, that you had already put a deed restriction or government, covenant document in place?
No, we're willing to do, we're willing to do that, ma'am, as part of this.
Okay. You know that that's not anything that we can deal here with tonight, but you, you've offered that out, you've-
It was in all the correspondence we sent out. Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more question, one more question, Bert. The conversations that you've had with the adjoining property owners, do you feel that they understand that lot one D is office and will re-
You know, there was some confusion. There was some bad information going around that we were going to sell it to Burger King. So that'd be kind of a bad place for Burger King, so I don't, there's some misinformation. It was very clearly stated in our, in our correspondence that that would remain office.
But was it your sense that there was any objection to having a structure with office in it, in that one D area?
No.
And do you think that, would it, would it be a safe bet to say that the adjoining property owners understand that, and there's not an objection to office there?
No, I don't, I would say that they understand that, absolutely.
The, the objection, the objection is to the proposed or usage of the building as it stands today?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else care to speak on this item?
Hello, I'm Clayton Jameson, live at sixty-three oh nine Grand Curry Drive. I developed this property and sold the land for this structure. It was built with a lot of class, a lot of respect for what I envisioned how this would go. And I own, what depends on how the line goes, but four or five of the lots that would, that are vacant, and I'm having the market, and of course, want to sell. So in my best interest, what I'm reading from this is that the neighborhood, sure they don't want it in their backyard, but it's already there, it's the same structure. But the neighborhood could use by the marketplace different things that are offered other than office. And the planning department is, is taking a hard look at this. This is a reoccurring thing that's happening throughout the city, that the current office zoning and the current- that the current office zoning and the current C4 commercial zoning is, is not adequately addressing what is realistic expectations from the neighbors. A buffer would have a certain type of expectations, that you wouldn't have late-night parties at a bar, or you wouldn't have odor, or, you know, it would be quiet in the evenings, and there's some expectations. So, as we've evolved, economy-wise, that these things that are in the list are in an evolving bracket of non-offensive type uses that neighborhoods desire to be there. Because the way they looked at it was, they went out and found out which, which things are going in these type of situations, what, where's the demand? And so, and, and you can see that the other people are looking forward to having not vacant or repetitive type services there. They would like some unique services that this option would provide. Now, I agree with the neighbors that I don't want the risk of it being something offensive someday. And until, until the city has the ability to have this light retail zoning that is still in the works, and that clarifies this kind of thing, a planned development is a way for, for this to take place and be a viable part of the neighborhood, increase my values, and I truly feel, and increase every, every neighbor's value. And I, I know we don't necessarily all agree, but I, I mean that sincerely, that it will make it more viable to have products, stores that are successful in this neighborhood, not vacant, office-constricted stores. So, I give my support, and...
Hang on, any questions for Clayton?
Clayton, this piece of property, when you bought this piece, this was a piece that had been developed all the way around. It was just a, was it eighty acres?
No, it was only eighteen acres.
Eighteen acres. Did you try to get this particular property zoned commercial after you bought it?
What we, what we did was propose that that top section, I can't point to it, but, yeah, where Wells Fargo is. We proposed that that be commercial, and then because of the problem we had as a buffer with this Sunshine. And so we proposed that, but we didn't have a specific site plan. It was only theoretical. So the planning department's position was, we'll consider commercial on that one sliver as a buffer, but only after you were to bring in a final plan that was non-offensive. Well, in this case, it worked out, of course, non-offensive in that it's Wells Fargo, and again, an asset to the community, just like the Sunshine store. But it, it was all worked into how the buffers had to take place.
Two of the people that, or two of the red dots here are people you sold lots to. When they bought those lots, did they ask what the zoning was on that particular piece of property adjacent to them? Did they buy them directly from you?
Yes, they did, and the building was actually under construction, what, what was going in there. And, you know, the specific things, I, dialogue, my staff would have taken care of. But, yes, they were building the, the building, and the zoning was there, and, and it was a well-done building. This, this isn't just a tacky thing by any means, I was very impressed.
There was a lot of talk in some of the previous meetings about this, and I, I have a feeling some of the neighbors are here. We've heard, or I've heard, over and over that there was an agreement reached back when you bought this property, and the zoning was placed on it, that this property would be zoned office, and that you agreed to that. And the neighbors agreed to that.
And, and that's what we did.
And was that shared to Mr. Collers, when, when he bought the property?
Yes, it was sold to him as office property.
We're told that you were in agreement with that at the time. Now you're, you're saying that a commercial zoning could and should be put there?
Well, I don't agree that no commercial zoning should not be put there. But what I do perceive is the very real, reasonable need for the city to have the ability to have something more articulated than office and commercial. That there is an evolution that's taken place in the industry where there's a lot of different functions that are evolving. Like, when, I don't know how long ago we came up with a zoning for office and commercial, but, I mean, did we have cellphones back then? As an example. And, and so the, the need is, is real and appropriate, but the, the question is, does, do any of these potentially not qualify for the category of non-offensive uses that could evolve into a different light retail? And if there is, then, then strike them. And if, and if there's an agreement with, with the thing, then put those restrictions on the title work. So that it is, is everybody, I know that is a reasonable expectation, is that everybody should be able to feel comfortable that this issue is put to bed, and, and that these are reasonable. And if there isn't a reasonable thing, strike it. And I'll bet you what we'll end up doing is help facilitating the change in zoning that is evolving as, as we're in the process of redoing zoning and access and, and this whole process.
Thank you, Clayton, I appreciate you.
All right, thank you, Clayton. Anyone else care to speak on this item?
Good evening, my name is Jason Arnton. I'm a minority co-owner of the, the existing building that is called Quail Crest. I just wanted to speak in support of the change, and talk just for a minute about what I would perceive the impact being. You know, I'm, my, my business is within the building. I'm there every day. My employees park behind the building, a couple, and some couple park in front of the building. So I kind of see the level of traffic that goes in and out of there. The Wells Fargo recently opened, I think, just a couple of weeks ago. We see a lot of traffic coming in and out with the Wells Fargo. With what we've proposed to, to, to use, to have for uses in this building, in my opinion, I don't, I don't see there being a lot of big problems as far as traffic or nuisance-type things. I also wanted to, to speak to an agreement that Bert and I have. When I came in and when I bought into that building, one of the, you know, one of the stipulations that I had is no bars, no liquor stores, you know, no video lottery, things like that. So, I don't know if that helps, because I know that's been a concern of some of the neighbors, so.
Okay, any questions for Jason? Thank you. Anyone else care to speak on this item?
My name is Lane Richter. I live at ten twelve E sixty-first Street, and I've lived there for about twelve years. And if I could, it would be the piece of property right there where that red dot is. And, and I'm speaking on behalf of, of other neighbors that are out here that also live along that, that back up that piece of property. There's four of us here, I believe, tonight, and then one that lives across the street in this area as well. I'm out here somewhere. First thing I'd like to talk about is, is the history a little bit, I know Sean touched on it a little bit, but we think it's very important that you understand that. In two thousand three, prior to two thousand three, this property was zoned RS1, which is, all this piece back along here was all RS1. When Clayton purchased that, the neighbors back here and Clayton sat down, talked, had met several, several conversations, neighborhood meetings, one-on-one amongst each other, and talked about how to zone this. We talked about the deeds, we talked about the contracts, we talked about RS1, RS2, dual-family. We talked about the RC zoning, we talked about the office, and, and we came to this agreement with Clayton and ourselves at that time. Clayton was very good to work with. Part of that agreement, if you could go back to the...
Go back to the map that shows the zoning?
Could you go back to the map that shows the, the zone colors? Part of the reason we went to office here was that across the street, it was zoned office as well. Okay, so we kind of tried to emulate office from here, as well as office to here. That's, that's why we came to that agreement. The, the buffer here was RC, there's a, there's a bunch of trees there. We tried to save those trees. The, the neighborhood, one of the things we did concede was the trees go all the way down. We tried to have all of those protected with RC. We conceded that they could possibly put an office building here. We would cut this corner so they could put an office here. So that's one of the things that we had agreed to. This piece of land here, I can't really speak to, it's very narrow. They want to change, or leave that as office. I don't know that there's room for an office building. Sean, I could probably answer that better, or the planning office. I don't think there's room for an office building in that piece beyond the RC, probably only over here. So, and we put a lot of thought into it, the neighbors were educated. We've talked to Clayton for two months. We came to an agreement with Clayton and the planning office. I was here in two thousand three, when, when Steve presented that to the planning commission, and said that the three of us had come to an agreement, and, and you guys had approved it at that time. So that's where this really comes from. It was an educated decision, it wasn't a quick decision on the neighborhood's part, in two thousand three. In two thousand five, Clayton had sold that to, to Bert Collers, and at that time...
Bert and NAI, if you can... Before Bert had purchased the property?
He had submitted a petition for rezoning to PDD, and you'll see the date on that is seven... July two thousand five. You can see that they wanted to change from office to planned development at that time. Before he owned the property, NAI was involved, Dennis was involved, Bert Collers was there, and Clayton was the owner of the property at that time. So prior to them building it, they knew what the zoning was, they knew what the neighborhood's position was on that property. And from that point, once they found out our position, they had actually pulled and dropped this petition. So this never did come to the planning commission at that time, before the building was built, before he owned the property. After he bought the property, put out the bid in two thousand five, and started the construction in November two thousand five, at that time it was zoned office. In August of two thousand six, when the building was completed, Bert Collers asked for a neighborhood meeting. There were ten neighbors there, and ten neighbors had strongly opposed changing it again at that point from office to PDD. That was a neighborhood meeting. He then brought it to the planning commission in, in October of two thousand six, which you guys seen. Again, it was office to PDD, the same thing we're seeing tonight. The neighborhood was supported there, and, and again, the, the planning commission supported us and voted to deny it. That brings us to today, where we're at right now. Couple of points, if you could go back to...
The overhead view of the property.
One of the property owners, John Riddle, who lived on this property right here, he could not be here this evening. He was told at that time when he built that house, that that piece of land was zoned office by the realtor, and, and I'm not sure if Jameson was involved or not, but he was told. Part of his reason was that he, he built there was because he knew that was going to stay office. At the same time, there are at least four houses along this piece of land that we have invested in our, in our homes and intend to stay there because we had the commission's support, and we knew this was going to stay office. So we've invested money and, and, and effort into our property because of that zoning and that support that you gave us. You go back to the, if you would please, to the one with the dots on it? This property owner is here tonight, and he also opposes it, that's a red dot. We really did not, this time around, did not go out to the outside neighbors asking for support. We felt this was an internal thing, and, and we were the, the property owners closest to that property, until we realized how strongly the developers were actually going out there promoting it. So we, as, we did as well, and I don't think you've seen this, but this is four pages of petitions with forty names on it, and thirty over thirty properties that, that have opposed that. Either that or patterns it around. And the, if you go back to those dots, the petition that we have, those, those forty names are properties that are aligned here, back in here, along Dove Trail on this side, and up and down sixty-first, in those property areas. I don't know that, how much that helps our position, but we felt that if, if we were going to have these types of dots, we needed to also get that neighborhood's support. And, and there are some additional green dots that had retracted their position today and signed our petition.
Lane, could you identify who you're representing tonight? Maybe just send up a razor.
There's one, two, three property owners, and myself.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Lane?
Clayton, I, in listening to you sort of lay out the timeline today, I, I mean, I can see or get the sense that, that you feel this is somewhat premeditated. But I want to speak to where we're at today, and the attempt with the change of the, the additional landscaping, and how that might have a positive impact on the neighborhood, and this idea of, let's just call it light usage or non-invasive usage, I've heard a few terminology things thrown around here, that really in all practicality would not be much different than what's happening there today. The increased commercialism of that corner, the traffic, and all of the things that have happened. Does that make you see this practical in, in any light? Because it appears to me like it's somewhat of a compromise. It's very different than what it was when presented a few years ago, but it's very much trying to come together.
This, this photograph, and I, I understand your point, and I'll try and give your point of view. And again, these are, these are things the neighborhood have talked about, they're not just my point of view. They've asked me to speak, we've discussed this time and time again. This is a view from my property line to the back of that building. Changing that piece of land to office does not change that view whatsoever, okay?
Nor does adding a vitamin store change that view from your property? That is your view from your property?
Yes, today, yes, that's my view from my property today. And then John Riddle, who, who has that other piece of land, who also opposes, sits directly to the behind it. And, and our concern, the reason we asked for office then, and we want to stay with office, is it provides us the restrictions and the, and the guidelines, and not the guidelines, but the restrictions that, that that zone gives us. If it goes to PDD or planned development, then all of a sudden it's just a guideline, okay? He says that, you know, we talked about having a coffee shop. That would be okay? I don't know.
No.
Okay, who defines that? That's on the list, coffee shops on the list. And I'm not saying that we oppose that, I'm just saying, here's an example of, of what we're concerned about. That's a coffee shop. Who defines what a coffee shop is down the road?
I don't see a coffee shop on the list. I'm sorry.
In the, there was a...
It says on the north end, only next to the bank. I mean, I'm try, I'm trying to think through the impact. The building is there, the building looks as it looks, the, the traffic implications, people coming in and out. When I look at these applications versus the Taekwondo shop, I, I, I don't see that impact. I mean, I, I sense where you are in terms of your lack of trust of that issue, but I don't, I see this being protective, somewhat protective in that respect.
Somewhat protective. I've been there twelve years, I could be there another twelve, if something else, once you, once you... When we decided to go from RS1 to office, our concern was just that, that it would, it's a slippery slope, how far would we go? Now we're going from office to PDD. Where's the next step? Am I back here another three years from now, or another year from now, or when the developer sells this to somebody else in five years, ten years? And then I have to defend trying to keep it from going to the next step, which would be a sandwich shop or something that is going to serve alcohol? That's what we're trying to stop for the neighbors in that area, is that slippery slope.
But if they restrict those uses on this property, would, would that, would that put your mind at ease?
How is, how is, no, it doesn't. Because how does that help me or the neighbors down the road? We don't have the resources, the finances, how are we going to, who's going to challenge that when something else comes in and they change that and break that contract, or somebody else isn't aware of that contract down the road? Who's going to go fight that battle, then? Then I have to get attorneys to go because they broke a contract that, and then, how defined is that contract? What is the difference between a coffee shop, a sandwich shop, a Subway, or a, or a sandwich shop that serves alcohol? Does the city define that?
Well, it's saying here, no lounges, no liquor, no fast food.
Where's the definition for fast food? Where's the definition for fast food? Does the city provide that?
No food. Oh, excuse me. No food.
But that's, that's one example. What else, what other examples are out there that we are not aware of? And that's why the office provides us that protection.
But if this, if this specific list is, I mean, if they're saying that this is, these are the, the only types of uses that can be used on this property, do you see anything else in here that is, that is objectionable?
The neighborhood has, has taken the stand with the list that we have not even discussed what's acceptable and not acceptable because we really feel firmly the office gives us that protection, that we don't have to create a neighborhood to decide what else goes on that list or does that list change. So we have not discussed it as a neighborhood. We really haven't. We're, we're just asking for your support to, you know, we made an agreement, um, honor that agreement with us if you would please.
Can you put the colored map back up? Just to the south of you, this blue, oh, office area, you know, you could get something in there that, personal services, that is high traffic. You have Wells Fargo to the north of you. It's not a very big piece of property, but you could technically have another bank go in there. That totally changes your line of sight from your house right now.
Um, actually, it, it doesn't, um, because my property is right here. I, I believe right from here, my line of sight to that building is there.
Okay.
Okay. Putting up, this RC, um, is, is a landscape easement, so it'd have to go in this piece here, uh, behind the trees.
Okay.
If it, if it's feasible, then yes, that's, you know, these are things we thought about for the last three years. Um, and we understood that, that, and actually, the, the original plan showed an office building there. It showed actually one here, office building, meaning, you know, a typical office design like Wells Fargo, here, 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 and here. There's four separate buildings in that area. And that was acceptable to us.
But you understand Wells Fargo as a bank, personal service, is far more intensive than what they have planned here?
Um, I guess we don't see that. We've talked about that in neighborhood and we don't, you know, we knew that a bank was going there. We knew that Wells Fargo was going to go in that spot, um, for some time. That, that was zoned office. And again, the neighborhood said, if that's zoned office, we will accept that. If a bank is, is, is in the zone office, we understand that. We accept that. You know, it's...
I'm done.
Okay.
I think it's important, uh, to draw one more distinction here, and that is that as long as it stays old, uh, the zoning is enforced by the city. As soon as this, uh, if this is allowed to go to deed restrictions, uh, the city can no longer protect these residents.
Exactly. That, that is that, what we're asking is for that protection. So we don't have, we don't have the resources, the finances to go battle that, that contract change.
Can staff step up and clarify that for me?
Sorry.
I, I think what Meredith just said is that we're, we're sort of walking on uncharted ground.
Oh, okay. I'll hold that thought. Got it. Oh, answer first? Okay. What was your question?
I think what I heard Meredith say is that we're sort of walking on uncharted ground, that we do things with stipulations, but in a sense, I, I thought what we were doing was going to a PD.
Right.
The PD would define these...
The problem is, these uses are not defined in our zoning ordinance. They would be all covered under retail, trade, and service. And so there's no way that we can enforce a cell phone store. So does that mean a Radio Shack can go in there or just, uh, give me a Verizon? Thank you. Or a Verizon store. You know, uh, we would have very limited ability to enforce the uses as they're listed here because they're not defined in the zoning ordinance. What Meredith was inquiring is, and what they offered in their, um, in their letters regarding restrictive covenants. If they file restrictive covenants, then the city, as you know, does not enforce those. So that's, that's what Meredith was getting at, is that, um, they may, the, they could limit this in a restrictive covenant and use this use, but that's still not something that the city can enforce.
But we, um, the only thing that we could do in a PD is just say retail trade and that's going to be somewhat expansive.
Yeah. That, that's the way it would be defined in the zoning code today.
But then who would, um, who would enforce those restrictive covenants?
The restrictive covenants are strictly by court and that's what Lane was trying to indicate is that if he finds that they are, um, in violation of those restrictive covenants, he would have to hire an attorney and go to court and have that reviewed by a judge to decide if it really is in breaking that covenant or that contract as he indicated it.
So the city cannot...
The city doesn't get involved with private covenants, period. It's strictly a civil matter in the courts, the third branch of government.
All right, thank you Shawna. Lane, we have a question for you.
Lane, I have a question regarding the process that the petitioner has gone through. They, and as, as Anita said, the building is there. There are some usages that are there now.
Mm-hmm.
So the concept that the petitioner has attempted to come up with is to bring this into a planned development district with the uses, the thirty-five or whatever number of items, I guess it goes up to twenty-four particular items there. So if I'm understanding your comments, you representing the neighborhoods are totally opposed to this approach of turning this into a planned development?
Yes. We oppose the PDD. You know, and, and our, just a couple more quick points, um...
All right, you've answered my questions, sir.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, uh, we will close, uh, public testimony. All right. Two minutes, that's, that's it. Now we need to wrap this up and move on.
Okay. After listening to Lane, it appears that, again, the biggest thing that is the issue that we might, that they don't have control of this process. We'll enter into, our association will enter into an agreement with the city or whoever we need to enter into it, that if there is a need for them to, uh, uh, hire an attorney, we'll pay for it. We, we can, there's a way to devise some solution to this that, that, uh, will make the, uh, uh, the provisions of the PDD, uh, enforceable. And the city today has other PDDs. Aren't those issues still out there today? And, um, if the neighbors are concerned about us changing our minds again, with, uh, we can explore how that can be done to their satisfaction. So they'll never be put in a position where they'll have to challenge the, uh, that list that we've put together. Uh, I'm sure there's a way to do that. Thank you.
We'll take one more.
My name is John Eckrich. Um, can I have the green and red dots? I live at eleven oh one East Sixty-first Street. I'm not listed as any color, but actually it would be red. There's only two quick points I wanted to, to bring. All, all those green dots out on the periphery. I just wanted to let you know how those came about so readily. We all got letters, um, from the owner of that property with a self-addressed stamped envelope, making it very easy to send back your, your, your letter saying, yes, I'm, I'm in favor. But all you had to do is lick the envelope and put it in there. I had no idea that, that those green dots were going to be up there. I wish I would have had something that is equally easy to express my opposition to it. I think we'd have a lot more red dots out on the periphery. And one more thing, over on the left side, it says that big wide open space, a little farther, a block to the east, there's, um, keep going, right there. That's a park. That's a city park. There's also a city park about three blocks west. I personally know a lot of children, including my own, that crisscross back and forth cliff to go to one park or the other. And it really, really frustrates me when I hear someone say, well, the traffic is just going to, that's just part of it. This is a busy street. So easily brush off the, 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 um, the, the idea that there's going to be increased traffic and there's nothing you can do about it. Well, that's not the approach I look. I look at more of the humanistic side where I see these kids going back and forth from one park to the other all day long. And I can't so easily discount the increased traffic there. I will do everything I can to keep the traffic down for as long as I can so the kids can grow up, you know, till they grow up and I'm out of the neighborhood. That's all. Okay?
Okay, thank you, John. Any questions? All right, thanks. Now we'll close public testimony and I'll look for commission action.
Mr. Chair. I think everyone, uh, I shouldn't say I can't speak for everybody in the commission, but there are certainly some uses on that list that I can't imagine would be troublesome, but I think this is a much bigger issue than just trying to come up with a list of uses. And Clayton's absolutely right. And the sooner we can get a, a new, uh, set of ordinances regarding zoning classifications, the better off we're going to be because this is probably, uh... Could you turn that off? Yeah, we won't count that against you this time. But anyway, getting back to my point, I think that this is a, a, an unfortunate situation because if there were some other zoning classifications, I'm sure that there could have been a better fit found. Uh, obviously, as a, a planning commissioner, I look at this too and, and, and I don't want to sit here and have, uh, after this, a, a parade of people who own businesses, uh, buildings in old occupancy or old zones coming in asking for the same thing until we get a different zoning code. So, uh, I, I don't know if there's any common ground. If I thought there was, I would suggest a deferral. Uh, I doubt there is. I'm seeing a head shake. Uh, with that in mind, I would move for denial of this item.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll second that motion. I, I just need to comment that I, I really felt that the petitioner and the landowners had attempted to come up with some type of a land usage that would be compatible. Uh, the building is there, the single family is there. Um, I, I, I was a little disappointed that the, the, uh, property owners were on and willing to look at this list and consider this list. The, the change in the zoning and, and the ord, and this ordinance change in, is a significant amount of time. This possibly would have gotten, stuff would have gotten us there sooner. But clearly, based on, uh, on the representative of the neighborhood, there's no common ground. And, uh, and that's too bad because the, uh, the building is there. Their lot one D has got an office use that will give us, provide some buffer. The west side of that property has a small parking lot with some, uh, shrubbery that would buffer that. But there just clears, there just clearly seems to be a, a standoff on this. So, uh, unfortunately, I'll have to support the motion. Because I, personally, I was ready to, I was ready to try to come to some, uh, common ground here with this and allow a PD to move forward to provide the landowner and the, and the neighborhood some common ground to work with.
There's a motion, a second for deferral. Is there, uh, further discussion?
Denial.
I'm sorry. Denial.
I share your frustration, Dave. I, I too had hoped that we could come up with something that would, um, be open-minded to the neighbors and that we could move this forward. But after Meredith brought forth this point, I think I understand the potential dangers of us trying to bridge this compromise right now for this group. Um, I think that there's some realities to this site and that location and the traffic and the things that are happening in that area that, um, whether they want to understand that or not, that are real about that area. But I'll have to support the denial too because I just don't think that we can open that discussion up until the zoning, um, reviews happen.
I want to further comment though that, um, again, I'm disappointed too that the neighbors were not open to some sort of compromise because they expressed a, a true desire to put this to bed. But if we support denial tonight, it is not going to put it to bed. It is going to bring it back again. So my recommendation to them is that they have got to sit down together and try and reach some compromise. There is give and take on both sides. This is a big difference than the plan that was brought here six months ago. And for the neighbors to truly put it to rest, they need, they really need to consider moving forward and not just standing in their same position.
Any other discussion?
I, I would, excuse me. I would agree with Jesse and I'm just really disappointed. Um, I think this is a very reasonable list that, um, the owner has put together. Um, I, I really, I don't see how anything on there could be objectionable. I understand the future use issues, um, but it just seems to me that through, maybe through their association or something, that they could come to some kind of an agreement and maybe some protection, um, against any future uses or need for legal action. I'm, I'm really, I would just be thrilled if we could deny this, but I know the motion's on the table.
Mr. Mr. Chair, I, I want to add too that, uh, I would encourage the petitioners, uh, to get involved. It sounds like Clayton may already be involved in the development of a new model zoning code. And, uh, get that in place, get it adopted so that, uh, the request for a rezone with the, you know, the much broader choice of rezones. I think that, uh, the petitioner would probably find a rezone that had permitted uses that made sense for them. And the neighbors, uh, with that same information, might be able to find a category or a rezone that made sense to them. But until you have that, I think it's pretty hard because, uh, there's not enough definition. So I would encourage the petitioners and even the owners in this, or the landowners in this case, to, uh, participate if possible in the process of developing and getting that model code, uh, in place.
Any other discussion? All right, uh, item number twenty-one. All those in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Item twenty-one is denied. Item twenty-two is a conditional use permit at seventeen hundred South Prairie Avenue, seventeen oh one and seventeen oh three South Summit Avenue in the S Institutional District to law college expansion for office use and construction of a storage garage. Staff report.
Thank you. The applicant represent, is Rod Bowler and he represents the University of Sioux Falls. Uh, this is an existing parcel that has some single-family residential uses and some existing buildings that will change use under this request. It is currently in the S Institutional Zoning District. The residential uses at seventeen oh one and seventeen oh three South Summit are not proposed to change. The existing building located at seventeen hundred South Prairie is proposed to change from residential to office use. The applicant has been advised to contact Building Services to verify building home requirements for this change in use. The proposed storage garage is described as a forty by thirty feet in size with a four twelve pitch and shingled roof and vinyl double four inch lap siding. For supplemental information, staff notes that the onsite parking is not indicated for seventeen oh one or seventeen oh three. That's the two residential uses that are going to be staying on the site and parking for those houses is required. Uh, parking requirements for the office building with eighteen hundred square feet is six spaces and only two are shown. So there's some, uh, parking issues built into this site plan that will need to be addressed, uh, by revising the site plan prior to the change of use. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting and the sign-in sheet and the flyer was included in your addendum packet. Uh, because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, uh, and a complete plan check for the change in use and any building, um, improvements will be checked by zoning and building services prior to obtaining a building permit. Staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit and we've received no phone calls on this.
Questions for Shawna? Thank you. Please, petitioner, please.
Good evening. My name's Rod Bowler. I'm the director of Buildings and Grounds at the University of Sioux Falls. I think the explanation that was given to you was, was pretty clear. Uh, we did have a neighborhood meeting. We had, um, um, four people representing three properties that attended. We had two contact us by telephone. We offered that option. We also offered an email option and we had one contact us there. Uh, nobody had any, um, concerns after we explained what we were going to do. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Rod?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action?
I'll move for approval of item 22.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item 22 is approved. Item 23 is a conditional use permit at 4300 South Louise Avenue in the C4 Plan Commercial District to allow motor vehicle display and sales. Staff report.
Good evening. Jeffrey Schmidt from the City Planning Office. This item came before you at the previous planning commission meeting last month. It's for a car lot on the southeast corner of Louise and 49th Street. It's for, at that time, it was for a 6,240 square foot building and parking for 73 cars with two conditions. It was approved by this body. When it came in for its building permits, the conditional use plan had been changed by the site plan conditions. And as this body knows, that we approve those plans, we approve that site plan itself. So they are coming back before you today to amend the plan that you see before you. It's a new conditional use. The one that you see before you shows that the building was on the south side, and now what they'd like to do is move the building to the east side. The site plan that you see before you is the plan that's being requested for approval tonight. It's the same conditional use request. It has the same requirements on it for landscaping requirements and parking requirements. The 49th Street overlay district along 49th Street on the north side still needs to be screened. That's a condition of its approval. And we have two stipulation, two stipulations, excuse me. Number one, that conformance to the 49th Street Design Review Districts is required. And the second one is that all parking and loading areas are to be screened from 49th Street per the plan which has been approved by the planning director. Can you answer any questions that you may have?
Questions for Jeff?
Jeffrey does, why was there a concern on item number one, on stipulation number one?
Why was there a concern?
Is the existing plan not conforming?
No, it is, it is in conformance with it, but we want to make sure that as it proceeds forward to building permits, it remains in compliance with the overlay district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Was there any other questions?
So Jeff, all things relative to the monument structures and the fence details and all of that, how we described it last time are staying attached to this proposed site plan change? Screening?
It's based, no, but yes. Because it's based on condition number two, that all parking and loading areas are to be screened from the 49th Street master plan, based on what's being approved by the planning director. So based upon what you suggested last time, it's been submitted to the planning director already. The planning director's been, has approved it, but it's not being shown today as a part of this conditional use. It's a separate item. It's a condition of its approval.
I trust you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
I know where you live.
The applicant, please.
Jeff Williams, Williams Automotive, 2223 West 12th Street. I've seen you guys a couple of times here in the last few months.
And the phone's off.
Oh, is it? Oh, yeah, my phone is off, definitely. I guess what we were trying to do is, we moved, we moved the building to this angle because on the 49th Street's side, we were going to put the fence that we approved, or basically approved with the director looking at it. And that, and so we decided to move the building facing Louise Avenue because it, when we got the, when we got the footprint on there, the, turning off of 49th, or turning off of Louise Avenue, you would be running directly into our service department. There was no room for them to move around. So we decided that we had to move the footprint around a little bit, and we decided that Louise Avenue facing it, that direction would be better for us. And we are wanting to screen, you know, 49th Street anyway to, to abide what the 49th Street designs, so I thought we, that would work a little bit better for us.
Questions for Mr. Williams?
Jeff, you understand, if you make any more changes, you'll be back here.
I know. That's the last one.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of item number 23 with the two stipulations stated.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item 23 is approved with the two stipulations. Item 24 is a minor amendment at 1600 West 22nd Street to SubArea A, Sanford USD Medical Center, PD, Land Development District, to provide additional signage for the Sanford Children's Hospital and Park.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Don Coiman, representing Sanford Medical, is here this evening to representing the owners. The applicant is proposing to modify their master sign plan by adding building signage and three freestanding signs. The applicant was granted a minimal amendment allowing the campus signage to be replaced due to the name change of the healthcare system. Basically, we have freestanding signs and a wall, and two wall signs requested. The proposed freestanding signs, photo renderings have been provided. The signs, the size of the signs have not been provided, but they will be the similar to the existing campus signage that is out there right now. The signs include an illuminated blue band on the left, boundary of the sign, which is exposed neon, it's the new blue glow that's, oops, I almost, Sanford, has on their campus. As far as the sign and building or wall signage goes, the sign allowance is based on the amount of frontage the building has. The applicant is proposing 195 square feet signs on both the north and the south elevation. Staff notes that there's no building signs on the proposed west elevation. This should remain a condition of the master sign plan, as there is residential across the street, and it is the one condition of approval. Because the application allows for public input and review of campus signage through the master sign plan, staff does recommend approval of this minor amendment with one stipulation, and that includes that building signage is not allowed on the west elevation of the Children's Hospital. And that concludes staff report.
Thanks, Shawna. Any questions? The applicant, please.
Don Coiman, Director of Facilities, Sanford USD Medical Center, 1305 West 18th Street. And I think Shawna wrapped it up pretty good. We're just asking permission to put signs on our new building out there. So I, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Questions for Don? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to address this item? If there's none, is there commission action?
I'll move for approval of item 24 with the one stipulation.
I second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? All right, all those in favor of item 24, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item 24 is approved. Item 25 is a minor amendment at 425 North Dakota Avenue to SubArea A, Minnehaha County Courthouse, PD, to increase allow, allowed height from 100 foot to 130 foot for courthouse expansion. Staff report.
Thank you. If it pleases the chair, I'd like to present item 25 and 26 together because they are very closely related in the same site plan. So item 26 is the final development plan in the Minnehaha County Courthouse Plan Development District to construct the courthouse expansion. And they're related together because what they're proposing to do is add two stories on to the existing Minnehaha County courthouse. The landscaping and the existing building footprint doesn't change, they're just raising the height of the building. And so therefore, in the, this zoning district, the overall height is only allowed or not allowed to exceed 100 feet. This proposal and the two floors would raise the building to 130 feet in height. The applicant is proposing to do the mid-rise governmental building. The site plan does depict the existing four-story building. The site plan does not depict any existing, or any changes to the existing site. There will be, of course, a master in construction and contractors staging areas, but there's no change proposed for the landscaping, no change in signs, and it is in the downtown Design Review District, and Design Review District regulations do apply. Because the application is a vertical expansion of existing structure, and the design is compatible with the existing structure, the minor amendment is required for the building height. Staff does recommend approval of both the minor amendment and the final development plan with one stipulation, and that is a parking plan is approved with building permit. And that concludes staff report.
Questions for Shawna? Thank you. The applicant, please.
Dick Dempster with Architecture Incorporated, 415 South Main. I think Shawna did a great job of presentation, and we can certainly agree with stipulations. And the way we've explained this building is, everybody looks a little better when they're taller and thinner. Any questions?
I couldn't agree more. I think this is going to be a very impressive-looking building.
I agree.
Any questions for Dick?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on either 25 or 26? If not, I'll look for commission action on item 25.
Mr. Chair, I will recommend approval of item number 25, along with a comment that Mr. Dempster was the previous planning commissioner. And we missed our good thought processes, Dick, so anytime you're bored, you're welcome to come back. But I would make the motion for approval of 25.
I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any commission discussion?
Nice to see you, Dick.
All right, on the minor amendment, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item 25 is approved. Is there commission action on item 26?
I'll move for approval of item 26. I'll second.
Hang on, what the stipulation is?
With stipulation, sorry. I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second with the one stipulation for the final development plan. Is there commission discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item 26 is approved with one stipulation. Item 27 is the final development plan at Southwestern Avenue in Grand Arbor Court in SubArea B, Heather Ridge 2, Plan Development District, to allow construction of multifamily fourplex residential. Staff report.
The applicant is here this evening representing the Vanbuskirk Company. The applicant is proposing to construct 64 townhouse units in 14 buildings on 14 lots in an approved subdivision plan. The final development plan is required for approval. In addition to the multifamily lots, there are 23 twin-home lots for 46 twin-homes units within this same subdivision. Adjacent streets include Western Avenue and streets internal to the subdivision. Staff has recommended that lots 16 through 20 in Block 2 be increased in depth to accommodate setbacks and buffering along the heavy traffic and noise along Western Avenue, and it is a condition of approval. The site plan that has been revised and is indicated, landscape buffer in that area. Additionally, staff notes that the fire department was concerned about private, the private streets, and it should be posted for no parking. And we are in agreement with the applicant that the condition for approval should be that the posting of no parking should be on one side, and that would be the internal part of that private street. A landscaping plan for the subdivision entrances and for a small park for the lots with, with Southwestern Avenue frontage has been provided by the applicant. There is a small park lot layout in an unplatted portion. Actually, it's been changed to Lot 14, which will include a patio, bench setting, and a rock wall and ornamental landscaping. The area should be platted, this area should be platted to be included in the maintenance agreement with the homeowners or the renters, and is also a condition of approval. Because the application otherwise conforms with the PD regulations, and a complete plan check for building height setbacks, parking, and landscaping will be done by zoning and building services prior to building permit issuance, staff recommends approval of the final development plan with three conditions. One, that lots 16 through 20 in Block 2 are increased in depth, which allow buffering for traffic, noise, odor along Western Avenue, and that is indicated on this site plan before you. Stipulation two is changed just a bit. Instead of saying both sides, we'd like to say on the internal side of the private street to be posted for no parking. And three, that the proposed park site is platted and included in a maintenance agreement for the homeowners slash renters. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Shawna? All right, thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Steve Vanbuskirk, Vanbuskirk Companies. I get a couple of things to add. I guess we had a neighborhood meeting, we had three people show up, no particular concerns. The buffering, I might have to ask Shawna about that. You want more buffering above and beyond it?
I don't know.
130, I think, aren't they? That's what, what we've got, Shawna. We made them, we made them deeper in our initial planning, so we want to stay with our site plan there. The topography on the site is quite intense. I don't know if you've got any topography maps on there. So it's quite intense, and it's a rather hard site to deal with. I think there's 17 feet of fall from top to bottom, so it really limits your options as far as what you can do. We recognize the noise issues that would be ahead of us in Western Avenue. I've actually got the builder here, and we custom designed this with the builder in mind, so he could speak to that. So I think as far as the lot depth, we'd like to keep with what we've got showing on that plan.
Okay, any questions?
Any other questions?
All right, thank you. Anyone else care to speak on this item? Is there commission action on item 27?
I move to approve the final development plan with three stipulations. Number two being modified to be posting on the interior side of the building.
Right.
Has Shawna read them?
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, on item 27, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item 27 is approved with three stipulations. Item 28 is the preliminary subdivision plan, 2006-06-19, Grand Arbor addition to the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, Southwestern Avenue, and Grand Arbor Court. Staff report.
Okay, this is the, basically the same site, and now we're talking about lot, block, and street layout. In order to complete this development plan, the additional property must be rezoned to be aligned with the subdivision, and that rezoning request was actually on the consent agenda this evening, so we've already dispensed of that item. The location is north of the intersection of Western and 85th Street. The name of the subdivision is Grand Arbor Division. They have provided the other preliminary plans and properties platted within 660 feet. The staff notes that it is not in a 100-year floodplain, and all other information required for a preliminary plan has been provided. You'll note that when the staff report was presented to the planning commission, that there was two conditions. However, the site plan has been revised, or excuse me, the preliminary plan, and so we are willing to make a recommendation at this time for approval without any conditions. And that concludes staff report.
Questions for staff? All right, thank you. The applicant?
Are you tired?
Well, the, I'm still, can you read me the three stipulations in our last?
Oh, here, it was on.
Yeah.
To include the drainage way.
Oh, okay, drain.
And then the open space, that little lot 14 needed to have a number on it, which it does now, with this new plan. Like that squirrel plan. That's no good.
Should we get that?
Yeah. The plan. The plan's been revised. That's not the right plan. You've got the right plan in your addendum packet.
Okay. The three stipulations from the last one with the lot depth, I guess I'm, I still want to clarify that.
So you want to talk about the lot depth on those lots?
Well, this is the subdivision classes. You know, we've got a hundred and twenty-one feet on those lots is what we've got for lot depth. You know, so, you know, I guess what I'm asking is to approve the plan as is. I mean, this, these are going to be for sale to, or townhouses, fourplexes. They're designed already. Morgan Colberg is the builder, he's here. We designed this plan with his needs in mind. You know, so again, we want to go with the lot depth as presented to the, the commission without the conditions of having more lot depth, which that's actually undefined. I don't know what more means exactly.
You're good.
Mr. Chair, didn't we already pass that?
We did.
Item 27 has already been acted on.
That was a final development plan. This is the preliminary subdivision plan, so this is actually locked up for on, on this.
But Shawna, you have no conditions on this. You've taken all the.
No conditions on item 28. Those stipulations.
So what Steve's asking is the hundred-foot, a hundred and twenty-foot lots, which is indicated on here. If, if you would like additional lot depth, you need to put it as a condition on the preliminary plan, because it's not really well-defined in the final development plan. It just says additional lot depth. I'm not sure what that means. So if you want specific lot depth, this is the, this is the application that we need to, because this defines the lot and block layout and the lot depths.
And Steve, you're asking for what? You're asking for.
Approval of it.
To approve what we're showing.
And Shawna, you don't have any problems with what they're showing?
Um, no, I guess I don't.
Great. Thank you.
All right, other questions for Steve? Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action?
I'll make a motion to approve item number 28.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item 28 is recommended for approval. Item 29 is a resolution amending the future land use map as a part of the city of Sioux Falls 2015 Growth Management Plan. Petition number 2007 dash zero six dash two seven at Marion Road and Madison Street from an allocation of future single-family, multifamily, and commercial land use to an allocation of commercial, office, institutional, and industrial future land use. Staff report.
Thank you. This particular application is amending the 2015 growth area map. Currently, everything between Ebenezer and, if you could go to the future land use map, that's the zoning map. Keep going, keep going. There, oh, there. You see before you the current future land uses. You can see from between Ebenezer and Marion Road, at the time that the 2015 plan was adopted, we envisioned that there would be residential uses across from the residential. The applicant is proposing to have the changes, if you could go to the next map, which allows for land use transitions, one more, of office, and also allowing some industrial uses to the south and offering residential land uses from across the road from existing residential in the MH District. So staff does recommend approval of the future land use amendment. The applicant, as required, mailed out letters to property owners within five hundred feet, and we've received no phone calls on this application.
Any questions for Shawna? All right, thank you. Staff, can you hear, please?
Hello, my name is Monty Miller from Sayre Associates, 216 South Duluth Avenue, and I'm working with the Legacy LLP and the engineer on the project, and there's also a few other representatives here that can answer questions as well, but I'd be happy to answer any questions of technical nature.
Any questions for Monty? I guess not. Thank you. Anyone else care to speak on this item? I don't see any, so is there action on item number 29?
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion to approve this future land use amendment.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? All right, all those in favor, item number 29, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item 29 is recommended for approval. Item 30 is adjournment. Your motion?
So moved.
There's a second? Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.